Good evening, and I'd like to call our November 6, 2018, Pickwa City Commission Meeting to Order. Let us stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Can we have our roll call, please?
Mayor Hines.
Here.
Commissioner Short.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Martin is absent. Commissioner Vogt is absent.
Make a motion to excuse Commissioner Vogt and Martin.
I'll second it.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I do want to make a note that because we have three of us here tonight, anything we vote on must pass unanimously. That is what our charter reads. So, we have excused Commissioner Vogt and Commissioner Martin. Now we move to the announcement portion of our meeting. Do we have any announcements this evening? If not, we will move to the graduates of our Government Academy. So if you are part of our Government Academy, I'd like to invite you to come forward, please.
As you go down front, Mayor, I'd just like to mention that the Government Academy is probably one of the better programs that we do that helps educate citizens on the inner workings of city government. And we have 12 individuals who have been through the academy that lasted nine weeks, and we appreciate that they have taken their time on Monday nights to experience all the departments, or most of the departments, and operations of the city. So, I'm hoping that, from what I understand last night, from our mock commission meeting, it was very beneficial, the weeks they've spent learning about the city. So, this time, we're going to recognize all of them that are here tonight, starting with Melissa Kuhn is not here tonight. Thomas Vogt. David Scott. Mary Tolman is not here tonight. Christina Wheeler. Bev Yant. And Holden Yant. So, could we give them a round of applause for going through?
While she's getting ready to do this, I have to say that I went through the Government Academy. It's probably been eight or so years ago, and I do agree with our city manager. This is a fabulous program here in the city. It was a great way for me to get to understand how our city government worked. One of the things I loved most was working with the sanitation department. I don't know if you guys got to crush a couch in the garbage truck, but I did, and that was pretty cool. But, anyway, but seriously, we thank you for becoming informed citizens. It is a great way to learn about your community, and we're excited to see how you will take this information and help use it to better the community in which we all live. So, thank you. I think Brittany's going to take a picture, and then if a couple of you wanted to come up and just say a few things about the Government Academy, we'll give you an opportunity to do that if anybody would like to do that. Can you all squeeze in together? We kind of do two lines if you can. I'll say, Joyce, why don't you come up, come up front? There you go. Perfect. All right.
Trying.
Ready? All right. Thank you. Would anybody like to say anything about their experience with the Government Academy?
Well, it's all right.
Why not stand up? Why not?
Yeah, why not? Right there.
Speak to the mic there.
I think my voice is loud enough.
Yes, it is. He's a good guy.
All right. First of all, I'd like to thank the city for the opportunity, not for myself, but for everybody that was involved in it. The directors that everybody has involved with the city department, as we talked about Mr. Huff last night, you guys have built an outstanding team, very knowledgeable team, and I look forward to picking up with the next class to pick up where I didn't get to visit this year. So hopefully, we do offer those next year, so I can see what that is. But for the directors that are here this evening, thank you for your guys' time and opportunity to learn.
Thank you.
Thanks for participating.
I, too, would like to say thank you. It was, you know, you think you know about the city until you get into some of the areas that you don't know about. So it was really very interesting. It was, I really appreciated the camaraderie among the employees, the department heads working well with their staff, and the staff working well together. The other thing that really caught my eye, it shouldn't have, but they talk so much about customer service. And that's amazing. I mean, when these guys are worried about getting power back on within 45 minutes, and, you know, I remember the days when we didn't have power for days. So, just very, very impressed, and really appreciated all the opportunities, and especially loved driving the snowplow.
Thanks, Lisa.
That's right. You get to drive snowplows, yeah, and lawn mowers as well. There's a variety of opportunities that you have. Anybody else? All right. Well, thank you guys very much, and spread all the good information with other citizens of what you learned in the academy. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, as Lisa was sharing about our power department, I have to share, you know, many times as commissioners, we get calls from citizens when a variety of things happen. And this past weekend, I had a call from a citizen in Candlewood. A transformer had blown in the midst of all the rain that we were having. And in the time that he called me, and I called the city manager, the power department was already out there working on it and taking care of it. And, you know, we are really lucky to have all of our employees and the work that they do, and the quick response that we have, especially in situations like that. So, you know, I always say, we don't know what we have until we don't have it, but we have a lot here, and the response that we do have from our employees here is wonderful. So I just wanted to echo what Lisa had shared as well. All right. Now we move on to our consent agenda.
There's one item on the consent agenda. It's approval of the minutes from the October 16, 2018, regular city commission meeting.
So moved. Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The consent agenda passes. And now we move to our new business. The first is ordinance number 15-18.
An ordinance amending, excuse me, an emergency ordinance amending Chapter 33 of the Pickwa Municipal Code, Employment Policy.
Ms. Wall will provide the report.
Thank you. This was originally written so that if the commission wanted to waive the three-reading rule, it could, given the fact that there are only three commissioners here tonight. That is not possible to do under the charter, so it will have to stand as a first reading. This ordinance was requested by the commission for clarification purposes. The language is amended to put it in a chart form rather than just verbiage, so that it will be clearer in interpreting and going forward with the ordinance. It relates solely to sick time cash out when an employee leaves the city of Pickwa for non-union employees only. None of the substantive merits of the ordinance were changed. The only thing that was changed was putting it into chart form, as well as where needed changing hours to days to make it consistent and read a lot clearer.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission? Do we have any questions or comments from our public on this ordinance? If not, this will stand as our first reading of ordinance number 15-18. And now we move to resolution number R-135-18.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Cascade Engineering for the purchase of trash carts.
Ms. Welker will provide the staff report.
Thank you. The sanitation department is looking to provide trash carts for the refuse customers of the city. The carts would be very similar to the recycling carts that we already own and have out for the customers to use. They would be 96-gallon capacity, the same blue color as the current carts, with the exception of a black lid, to distinguish them from the recycling cart. Each customer would receive one 96-gallon cart. If they so opted, we'll provide two additional sizes of smaller carts. We're looking to get the carts out as quickly as possible. The turnaround time is about eight to 10 weeks once we place the order. So, we're looking at early 2019, getting the carts out to the customers to utilize.
Thank you. I know that, I just want to reiterate, because I've had many citizens call me about the smaller recycling carts, that the smaller trash carts would be available to our citizens as well that didn't need the larger ones. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Just, I've been getting several calls about it, and this, I can go back and report happily to the people that it's on its way. So, that's great.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the public on this resolution?
I'll be back. 921 Camp Street. I just want to say it's about time we finally got him. Maybe it'll cut down on some of the trash that's flying around and laying around, and what our sanitation workers have to go through. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's a really good point, because this way, these trashcans are a little heavier than some of the other ones, and especially in the windy conditions that we've been having. So, thank you. Anything else? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R-135-18.
I'll second it.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-136-18.
A resolution to levy assessments to pay for the cost of nuisance abatement.
Ms. Welker.
Thank you. Commissioners, if you'll recall, I was here in September and presented a very similar ordinance, and at that time, I mentioned that we were going to look at doing this quarterly. So this will be the first quarterly nuisance assessment that will be brought before you. The purpose of doing so is to limit the amount of assessments we bring forward at one time to provide public notice quarterly throughout the year. We will post this information on our website, so that anyone that's looking to purchase a property will have easy access to this information. But what this ordinance does is assesses the cost for nuisance abatements to property taxes. What happens is, the city receives complaints about nuisance conditions. We investigate those. Mainly, it's things such as high grass or weeds on a property, trash or debris, things like that. We investigate those. If it is a violation of city code, the property owner is notified of the violation. They're given a timeframe to correct that violation. If they fail to do so, the city hires contractors to abate those conditions. They then receive a bill. If they do not pay the bill, it goes on this assessment list, which is presented before you.
All right. Thank you. I do want to reiterate, as you said, if somebody is buying property, that they can check on the city website to see about this, so they don't get caught in the midst of that, so... Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from our public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution R-136-18.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-137-18.
A resolution amending the contract with the SSOE Group for professional consulting and engineering services for the power system.
Mr. Krieger will provide staff report.
Thank you. A little bit of history, as you may recall, during the budget process, we identified the replacement of the city's high-voltage circuit breakers. There's 12 of them total, and three of the main substations that the power system owns and operates, that we identified for replacement over the next three years. So we were going to use a phased-in approach to replace these assets that are 40 to 50 years old. They're oil-filled, if you remember, and some are SF6-filled, which are both, present some environmental challenges. And so, we decided to move forward with a three-year program to replace these breakers. And in January, I came before commission requesting legislation to enter into an agreement with SSOE to help us with this process, to help identify a manufacturer for the breakers, and then help with the, and provide engineering services to start with the replacement project this year at our substation number five with the first of the three breakers. So then we came back in April. We had identified Hitachi TND out of Georgia. They actually manufacture a vacuum breaker, which is really kind of a leader in the environmental side of things. You eliminate, most companies have moved to SF6 gas over oil to quench the arc in the equipment. These high-voltage breakers are really what controls the flow of power in and out of the city, and the relaying, which is kind of the brains of the breakers, which tells it how to open and operate. So, we needed to provide the, after we ended up entering into an agreement with Hitachi for the 12 breakers over three years, we moved forward with engineering at our substation number five with plans to complete the installation this fall. We received the first three breakers and started the installation, and during the construction, we identified a few items that required some additional engineering support. The foundations for the three breakers weren't adequate, had to be redesigned. And then we also found that the substation number five was built with city staff in the mid-'80s. Once we got into the project, we identified the drawings, and what was installed in the field really didn't match. So we had a lot of onsite wire tracing. As you can imagine, there's, the control wiring for these projects is pretty intensive, so you literally trace one wire at a time, and you have to do that. It's safety and reliability, so when you're done, you know what you have. And then, when that's completed, there's probably two weeks of drawing updates that have to be done, now that we identified all the corrections. So, the changes that I'm requesting with SSOE are really to take into account those additional engineering services we identified once we started construction. We've been working on this project over the last five weeks. Most of the construction has actually been completed by city staff. Tim Angle, under Tim Angle's leadership, and three of his employees, and support from Bob and his staff, did a really nice job. And we put the substation back in service today with the new equipment. So, really pleased with that. But, this legislation allows us to go ahead and get those drawings updated, get those markups corrected, and so, moving forward as we troubleshoot things, we have good drawings to do that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission?
I'm glad to see it's in service today. That's great.
Any questions or comments from our public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for resolution R-137-18.
I'll second it.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-138-18.
A moral obligation to pay Valley Asphalt Corporation for hot-mix asphalt for the 2018 street, alley, and bike path maintenance program for the Public Works Department.
Mr. Brookhart will provide the staff report.
Yes, we have been purchasing hot mix this year from Valley Asphalt all year, and have surpassed our original budget estimate. And we ended up completing numerous streets and alley projects throughout the city, as well as portions of the bike path that needed to be repaired as well. We completed, we completed more projects than we had planned on, and did exceed our initial dollar estimate. Both of our budgets are able to absorb the increase. We made some huge improvements on, in East Pickwa, just east of Spring Street, in between State Route 36, on the east side, on the north side and the south side of the roadway. We resurfaced just about every road in that area. And as you come into Pickwa, I'm sure you've seen it, I think that has made a huge impact on just the look and the feel as you enter our city. It certainly gives you the impression, you know, that we care about our community and our infrastructure, and I think it is very important that we were able to spend these additional dollars on these roadways. The city manager did authorize the additional funds to be used in resurfacing these roadways. At first, we planned on doing some major patching over in this area, and when we looked at the roads, the patches were going to be so long and extended out, that when I looked at it a second time, I took Gary out and said, "Gary, this really would make more sense to complete these streets from one end to the other." Longevity, we're going to get a longer lifespan out of the roadway that way. Trying to go back in and patch a few hundred additional feet later down the road, it's just tough to match up with older joints. You're going to, you would see those older sections start to fail before the other sections would. This was just a better way to complete that area of town, and he agreed that we should go forward with that, and I thank him for allowing us to do that. So, you know, we got a lot of compliments from superintendents that run Barrett Paving and do this for a living, and put down more asphalt than anybody does. They came and looked at our projects, and looked at what we did, and could not believe the quality of work that our employees were doing with the small amount of staff that we had. They said our paving was absolutely outstanding, and that we could pave side-by-side with them any day of the week if we wanted to. They also offered some free training while they were here in town, working on some projects for the engineering department up in Candlewood. Our employees spent two or three days with their employees, and we were able to run and operate their paver, their rollers, our operators sat next to their operators, and just gained a lot of extra knowledge. They showed them some, just some different techniques to make their jobs easier in what they're doing, and it was, it was an outstanding opportunity, and we've just gained a really good relationship with them. It's impressive to see them come and look at our work and say, and tell us just how outstanding that it is for the staff that we have. They were using about double the amount of people that we have employed to do the same amount of work that we were getting completed, and they were very impressed with what we were able to do. This has been, you know, the city being able to have the paving equipment that we have is, there are not many municipalities around here that do what we do and have the capability to do what we do in-house. I just, it's great that we're able to do that, that we're able to go out and do, if we have to, make big patches in roadways to sometimes extend the life of a roadway, that maybe we don't have the funding to completely redo a roadway, but maybe we can go in, and there are some areas in the past, like Commercial Street, for instance, about seven or eight years ago, we put about a half-inch layer of asphalt over the top of that roadway, just as a Band-Aid to keep that roadway together until we could resurface the roadway. And that gave us another six, almost seven, years of life out of that road before we had to go in and do that. So, having the equipment and the capability to do that is great for this city, and we appreciate being able to do that.
Well, and I remember just, when they were over in East End Pickwa, it was probably some of the hottest days of the year when they were paving over there. I mean, I think that's just a reminder of what some of our employees, you know, I mean, it's their job, but it's, it's hot paving anyway, but I think it was in August, and I remember seeing them over there and just thinking how just brutally hot it was, on top of dealing with hot asphalt.
I do want to reiterate that this extra work was done in my direction, so Brian did exactly what he was asked to do.
Yeah. And also, just to note that not only the street and alley, but portions of the bike path that needed to be repaid for safety reasons as well, was part of this resolution, so... Okay. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution R-138-18.
I second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-139-18.
A resolution approving the purchase of excess liability insurance.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you. As you know, we are members of Moverma that carries our liability and property coverage. However, Moverma does not cover very few specific items. This resolution is for one of those items, and that's the dams within the city. It does not cover any liability or property issue with the dams or pollution that would result from those dams. We have been with AEGIS way longer than 20 years. The renewal came back this year, actually at a lower rate than last year, which is very good news. However, the amount of $87,453 is more than last year, because this policy has always been on a very odd date. It renews around November 20th. And so, last year, I wanted the policy to roll over so we could get it on a calendar year. So the extra money, if you will, on this resolution is just covering the period from November through December 31st. So again, it's actually a decrease in the premium, but this is a greater amount, just because it's a greater time period.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from our public on this resolution? Not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for resolution R-139-18.
I'll second it.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-140-18.
A resolution approving the purchase of liability insurance for Pickwa's combustion turbines.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you. This is also one of the areas Moverma does not cover. It is the turbines in the power department. At one time, Moverma did cover that. After going through a million-dollar-plus claim, the carrier decided not to continue because they're expensive, and the problem is, they're not new. They were very old at the time. Since then, we have done significant amount of work, updating and rebuilding those, so everything is basically brand-new. We went through a period of time without coverage, and then last year, we finally were able to receive coverage on these units. It was through Chubb, and we are asking for renewal of that. This one already is on a calendar year, and there was no increase in premium from last year's coverage.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution R-140-18.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-141-18.
A resolution retaining the service of Enrollment Management Service to provide health insurance consulting services for the city of Pickwa.
Ms. Bogan will provide the staff report.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you. With insurance costs increasing year to year, creating a meaningful benefit program while staying within budget is a challenge, as I'm sure you all understand. Our health insurance broker, Haran, introduced Enrollment Management Services, EMS, to the city to explore our options to manage increasing costs. EMS works with employers to develop programs and tools to better support each employee's unique insurance needs and opportunities. To identify these needs for our employees, the city partnered with EMS and allowed them to collect information through voluntary surveys and in-person interviews. This information was, of course, HIPAA-protected, and their individual information was not shared directly with us. The study was... individual information was not shared directly with us. The study was done in an effort to determine who could potentially take advantage of alternative healthcare resources outside of the city's plan. During this process, EMS identified several employees who could potentially take advantage of alternate healthcare resources. The projected impact in year one is a max net savings of approximately $600,000, considering a reduction in premiums cost and a reduction in claims cost. If approved by the commission, as a partner consultant, EMS will provide education and enrollment support for employees who voluntarily elect to work with them to identify alternate healthcare resources. Specifically, some of our families on our plan are facing serious and chronic medical issues with high out-of-pocket expenses. EMS can work with these employees to secure alternative assistance that can minimize their out-of-pocket expenses. The city will offer, off, offer, excuse me, opt-out funding to employees who waive our plan, to enroll on another employer's plan, or a government-sponsored plan. The data provided demonstrates that the savings and claims costs can outweigh our opt-out costs. Additionally, EMS has offered a performance guarantee to us for their services, meaning if the city does not experience a positive cash flow within the first six months, we will not pay the consultation fee to EMS until a positive cash flow is achieved. Ultimately, if employees choose to utilize our healthcare resources, other, excuse me, healthcare resources ready, available to them, the cost of insurance can become more sustainable for the entire city employee group, and we could experience a serious reduction in group health insurance costs. As employees utilize other resources that better fit their needs, the healthcare budget could experience less financial pressure and be well-positioned for our future.
Thank you.
I would just like to add that this is really a win-win for the city and employees. It's an opportunity to really help employees in some cases where they're facing tremendous out-of-pocket costs, and at the same time benefiting the premium cost to the city. So, in talking with other cities, for instance, City of Xenia, they saved 1.2 million the first year with this program, and helped, and the city manager told me that it was the best money he ever spent to help employees. So, this is a good opportunity for us to be creative and innovative on how we handle health insurance. And I think in the future, we have to look for these type of ways to, to benefit from this.
How many employees were identified by the survey?
I think, I think we had 70.
We have 21 who currently opt out on our traditional plan, and 64 others who can benefit from this program.
How many total city employees are there currently?
On our plan, there's 173 employees.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for resolution R dash one forty-one dash eighteen.
I'll second it.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. And now, we move to the public comment portion of our meeting. Do we have any public comment this evening?
Good evening, folks. Bradley Behringer, 2128 Mount Street, Pickwa, Ohio. Three things I want to lightly briefly touch on tonight. One is first, to congratulate our government academy graduates. I know that when I went through the very first one back, and I think Gary helped me out here, what was the very first one, 2011?
Twelve.
Twelve? Was it, was it? I thought it was 2011.
I didn't get here till the end of '11.
Okay. Well, whenever it was. It was a very enlightening experience. And I would encourage anyone in the city that has not taken it to do it, you will be, your mind will be blown away at what our city employees do day in and day out. Second thing I want to talk about tonight is something that has become very near and dear to me within the last couple of weeks. As many of you know, we've been hearing a lot from Larry Hamilton about the African-American heritage here in our city through the Randolph slaves. Well, I think there's another important part of our heritage that is not talked about much, and that is our Native American heritage. The state of Ohio, not just the city of Pickwa, but the whole state of Ohio, was one, at one time, a rich Native American culture. From the Miami to the Shawnee, various tribes have settled in this great state of ours, and right here in this area, the Pickwa area. In fact, for those of you who may not know, the name Pickwa, and I hope I do not butcher this phrase, comes from the phrase Otath Hawa Pickwa, which I believe is either a Shawnee or Miami phrase, which means he is risen from the ashes. This month is Native American Heritage Month. And I would like to issue an invitation to you commissioners, if you would like to do so. On November the 16th at 6:30 PM, at the Dayton Peace Museum down in Dayton, Ohio, will be a gathering to hear three speakers on Native American culture. One is Valerie LePoe, who is a Cherokee native. The other is Danny Black Goat. And the third is Guy Jones, a Hunk Papa elder from, I believe, the Pine Creek Indian Reservation. He is resident here in Dayton, Ohio. And the next day, November the 17th, at the Sunwatch Indian Village in Dayton, Ohio, will be a traditional Native American luncheon with traditional Native American foods. And I would like to invite you all to come out to that, because this is a way we can embrace our Native American heritage. Because whether we agree with it, whether we want to think about it or not, the Native Americans are the true first Americans in this country. They beat us white folks by a very long time. So, I would encourage all of you to come to that, and I will be more than happy to send information. I had some flyers, but I didn't get the chance to print them out and bring them with me. I'll email them to you, to, with more information. And thirdly, and finally, I just want to leave you with a little bit of amusing dog role I read today in Annie's mailbox, considering today being November 6th, Election Day. Now comes the question that will surely vex us. Of just where, we will place our Xs. Voting, folks, don't let it get you. Be thankful we're living where they let you. Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. And I do want to point out, I have a, on Channel 5, I have an Eye on Pickwa series that I've been doing. My most recent one, I did with Andy Height out at Johnston Farm. And we talked a lot about the Native American history of our community and how we would not be here if it was not for that. I agree that that's a very important thing to honor and reflect on within our community. But I did want to point that out, that there's some great history that, that we have out at Johnston Farm. And Andy did a really good job of sharing some of that in that episode. So, it's on Channel 5, it's on my Facebook page, it's on Indian Nation's YouTube page as well. So, thank you for bringing that to our attention, though. Thank you. Any other public comment this evening?
I'll be back at 9:21 camp. I'm still going to be a nuisance on this property thing. I think we ought to get together with some meetings with the public and get some more input on housing in this town. Because I go, I still go out and I see the same properties that are still in the same condition, and it seems like they're not being enforced. So, I'd like to see, because it's been probably, what, 10 years since we had a big battle with landlords about the ordinance and stuff like that there. And it seems like they're starting to get away with more and more and more. Because I see these rental properties, and they look just as bad today as they did 10 years ago. So, I'd like to see if there's some way of setting up something to where we can have public input, because I know you'll get public input. And the other thing is, a month or so ago, somebody was up here about the Hans Pavilion. Has anything ever been looked at or done on it?
What was the, I don't remember.
I forget who it was that come up here, and they've talked about the deterioration of the Hans Pavilion.
Well, we had a problem with the raccoons eating through the roof.
Is that what it is? Okay.
We took care of that.
I just thought maybe it was deteriorating. I hate to see something like that.
We've done structural improvements to it, so we should be in fine shape.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other public comment this evening? If not, we will move to our city manager's report.
Thank you. Echo Hills Golf Course will be hosting the Wounded Warriors 5K Run Walk on Saturday, November the 10th at 9:00 AM. So, we'd encourage people to go out and participate. We received great news today that our employees met the requirements of participating in our health insurance provider's wellness incentives that allows the city to receive a one-month premium holiday in 2019 at a cost savings of over $200,000. So, we appreciate the great involvement of our employees to watch their health and to help us on keeping costs down. So, it's a, it's great that they have taken this challenge on. The city of Pickwa and the community will be highlighted in the Dayton Business Journal in the next couple of weeks. So, keep your eyes posted on a number of articles that promote the city and, and of course, the community. Kettering Health Network is planning a groundbreaking ceremony for their new facility on Looney Road on December the 10th at 1:30 PM. So, it should be a large, large event. And finally, just the last information I'll give you is that on November 13th, will be our 2019 budget meetings with, 4 o'clock will be enterprise funds, and then at 6 o'clock will be general and other funds. So, that is the budget review for the 2019 for you. So, that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or any comments from the commissioners?
Oh, where are we at? I think you told me, but let the citizens know about Pittsburgh Park Playground Equipment. You said that was going to be in the budget.
That is in the 2019 budget. I think it's $80,000. And after the first of the year, we'll be able to order and begin getting bids and so forth, and ordering the equipment so that we can get that installed at the beginning of, as early as possible next year.
Great.
Anything else? Any comments? Commissioner Lee?
I want to congratulate the Citizens Academy graduates. Thanks for going through the process. Not easy, but it is helpful knowing what each department does. Looking behind the scenes, you see a whole lot about what, what goes on that you didn't know before. And I, it gives, it gave me a greater appreciation by working for the city to visit the other departments. You, as citizens, get to go and actually explore and see it as well. So, pass the information on, have other people come and participate. We want as many people to go through it as possible, so we can see what the unsung heroes that work for the city do and, and on a daily basis. And next, I just hope everybody exercise their right to vote, that can vote. It's important to be part of the process. I hear a lot of people complaining, a lot of people upset about the way things are. Nothing changes without you participating. And people will say that their one vote doesn't matter. It does. It honestly do. One small vote, a lot of one, one votes add up to, to represent change or represent keeping things the way they are. So, your vote matters. So, I hope everybody exercises their right to vote. And that's all I have.
Commissioner Short?
I, I want to piggyback on what Commissioner Lee said in the sense that whatever the outcome of the vote is tonight, let's, let's keep it civil. Let's not have problems, or if you, even if you disagree, you know, as a police officer, former police officer, we used to have to deal with problems sometimes if things didn't go the way people wanted them. And I just want everybody to, let's get along, and let's, let's do whatever we need to do to make this, not only this city, but this country and state great. So, that's all I have.
And, yeah, and I would piggyback. We are stronger together in the midst of our differences than we are in our disagreements. So, that is a very good message to share, Commissioner Short. Just a reminder, our horse parade, our annual horse parade is a Saturday downtown Pickwa. The veterans' service will be Sunday, November 11th at 11:00 AM at the Veterans' Memorial. So, come out and support your veterans for that. And I think that is all I have. We are moving to executive session, so I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I'll second it.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in, oh, I need a roll call, please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Hines?
Aye.
Commissioner Short?
Aye. Oh, no, you need to say ayes. We are adjourned to executive session.